Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
I would like to call the meeting to order for the Bellas Falls Union High School District, Monday, December 14th. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none, Molly.
I have a, I think, a rephrasing of an item on the agenda that, so I think one of the items on there, which is, just a second here. Item. It's 7A, which is grant distribution of private funds for literacy. I believe that came from a request from David Clark that goes like this. I'm just clearing this up because the terminology doesn't quite match what I think was being asked. So David asked, "A year or so ago, we received a very sizable private grant to enhance our financial literacy offerings. How is that money translated into programming?" So whether we change it or not, it really wasn't a grant, but a donation. And grant has a specific meaning, and a donation means something different. And it's for financial literacy, which, again, in education speak, there's a distinct difference between financial literacy and literacy. So I just wanted to note that as a tweaking of the wording on the agenda, I guess I would say, so that people have an understanding of what we're getting at.
So Chris, can you just help me rewording that?
Well, David had his hand up, and I don't want to speak for David, but I think that's what we were trying to get at.
Perfect. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Molly. Chris is correct. I just want to add that the grant actually had somewhat wider parameters than just financial literacy. And I'm hoping that Chris might be able to discuss, you know, some of the other creative uses that it can be put to or is being put to.
I have the specific past motion that tells us exactly what we can use it for, David, so I'm prepared to speak to that.
So, but we need to...
Right, so it should probably say, "Update on donated funds for financial literacy and other goals."
Okay, so we have an adjustment to the agenda. We'd like to reword number seven for "An update on donated funds for financial literacy and other goals." Is that good, Chris?
Yeah, gets it done.
Is there any other adjustments to the agenda? "Review and approve board minutes for November 20th." Can I have a motion for that and then discussion if needed?
I'll go ahead and move the motion that we approved the minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll be second.
Is that Jack?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any? Mr. Clark? Got to unmute, hon.
Thank you, Molly. Was a quorum present on November 20th?
There was a quorum on 20th that I'm aware of. The meeting on November 5th, there was not a quorum on November 6th.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone have any adjustments? Priscilla?
I have a question on the, well, it would be on the second page. It's talking about Jack's motion, but then there is no, there really is not a reflection that there was of the actual motion. We did, you said we had a motion on the floor, but there's no motion there unless you were talking about Jack's motion, which we didn't agree with. But Jack removed that, so where is the motion?
Okay, let's look and see.
Because Jack declined to make a motion at that point. It's like four or five days. And it says, "David accepted the mic manager superintendent," but it doesn't say he made a motion or anyone made a motion. So we need to at least put in there something about having made a motion. But there was one. I'm not questioning there being one, but yes, there's no reflection of a motion that was made.
Jack shared his prepared motion. So, did we not have his motion?
I think I had been asked to, sorry, I think I'd been asked to send text of it, and I've had a rather busy couple of weeks, and so that may be on me. And I can do that, send that, as we can have that just attached, and I can send it to Nicole, and that will clear the issue.
It says in the minutes there that Jack seconded the motion.
Yeah, that's an error.
But Priscilla's right, there's no actual motion.
So I do think that that's right. Jack was asked to send it to them.
It says that Jack moved that his, the board's policy, follow the recommendation of medical staff, and then he withdrew that.
Right.
So before you say we have a motion on the floor, we need to reflect that there, you know, what the motion was, is all we need to do.
And Priscilla is quite accurate, and that was, the gist of the motion was that we set forth as a policy that we follow the recommendations, mostly because that's kind of what we're doing. But we decided to go a different direction, and that's fine.
Okay, so I tried to take some notes, and I don't, I don't see who made that motion either, so we're going to have to go back and watch the video or something. David Clark?
Molly, I'm fine with going back and watching the video. However, I think what the video will show is that I moved to accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools.
So I have that written down on my notes too, but I don't have that you made that motion, so, and then I have that Jack seconded it. But we can verify it with the, with the video, and that will make us all legal.
I was going to say, we can simply withdraw the motion to approve.
Right, I mean, I'm okay with withdrawing. I mean, would that necessarily, Molly, would that mean, are we tabling till we confirm with the video for the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll, if, Madam Chair, if I need to withdraw my motion, I will.
Okay. So we are not going to approve any minutes for November 20th meeting right now. Communication and public comments. Chris, do we have any? I can't hear you.
I'm just checking the chat right now. Say that, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. There's no policies yet. We have a policy committee meeting, hon.
I'm still in the process of trying to get that arranged with everybody. Right now, it's difficult because of the additional meetings we've been adding to the calendar, but I can anticipate we're going to have one before the winter recess right now.
Okay, so after the first of the year, we're going to get on policies.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jack?
Just said, yeah, we're, there has been a full-scale review, because we did find that we had sometimes a couple of different versions of policies that dates which weren't documented, and Chris and Jessa West Clark have been working, I think, quite diligently in getting all that cleaned up, and it'll make it a lot easier for us to go forward. And yeah, given everything that's going on, and the fact that budgets are up right now, policies are going to have to take a second, a backseat for a month.
Okay. Chris Hodgson?
Is Jessa West Clark looking at the BFUHS policy book?
She's, I think we're looking at the broad policy because we need to get all of them cleaned up, Chris. And, you know, you make a good point that it'd be useful to get your version of them into the mix, just to make sure that we have, and I suspect yours might be among the most accurate we have, and that would, I would encourage you to, to check in with both of them. I'm on the committee too, but Jessa was the one that volunteered to take the deep dive.
I am happy to become actively involved in that process.
We, you know what? That would be a good thing, because you get continuity, and you have, and you have probably the best electronic set we have, so.
Well, I've got a really good three-ring binder with all of the...
You had, does that one have all, does it have all the stuff that when we started going purely electronic, does it have all that stuff?
I always update it.
You're a fine human being.
Hard copies are useful.
Okay, then that would be a good thing, just as a final check. And you and I and Jess will arrange, and Chris can arrange, do a quick round robin on that.
Sure.
All right.
I will, I do, really, the reason I ask is because I just want to note that there are some policies...
That are high school specific.
That are high school specific. That's exactly it, and I just wanted to make sure that we are appropriately attentive to those.
All superb points.
Colin James, your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hudson and Mr. Brier, my question is, I know, and Mr. Pratt, just real quick, I know that the, are we discussing policy district-wide? Mr. Hudson kind of answered my question a little bit, because there is a piece, obviously, for the high school specifically, but Jessa is not a member of the high school board, so are we going through district-wide?
Can I, with your permission, Molly?
Yes.
The process here has been since, well, for the last couple of years anyway, that the, that the SU, the SU Committee, which is actually a joint committee of all the boards, formulate recommended policies to, to everyone. They are adopted for review by the SU Board, and then sent on to the individual, individual district boards, which can tweak them, although we try to encourage them not to tweak them, except where it's a very district-specific issue, and that's the process. We did a very thorough view, almost two and a half, almost three years ago now, and so we're really, but when, when we had, when Chris Kivvy left and Chris, Chris Pratt came on, there seemed to have been a bit of a hiccup digitally, and we're...
Oh, I do remember that time now.
Yeah. Okay. But that's, but that's the process.
Yeah, you're right.
This joint board, the joint committee, adoption by the SU Board, adoption by the subordinate boards, or not subordinate, the member boards, and that's the process.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Jeff.
No problem.
Okay, I think we're good. We can move on to principals report.
Okay, so the first item there is an update on our opening of schools, and we're getting to about the halfway point of school, so it's like, how far do you walk into the woods, joke sort of thing? So we're almost halfway through the opening, so maybe reports in January, February about the closing of schools, but in any event, our reopening is going fine. I don't have a lot to update you on. We are focusing now on both the wrapping up of the first semester and making plans for our final exams, and planning for the second semester. One important point I think that board members should be aware of is, as we move into the second semester, we are running into issues with fewer options for fully remote students, and I just want to make you all aware of that. Our guidance counselors are working individually with the families who are interested in continuing fully remote, but in particular, high school VTVLC classes are becoming more difficult to come by for all the obvious reasons. They're, they're getting filled up. We are committed to doing the best we can to help families that want to stay fully remote. In some instances, we might not be able to get all of the classes that a particular student is looking for, but we are going to do all that we can to make sure that that sort of situation does not interfere with anyone graduating on time. I have also, so I put a letter out to the families of the fully remote students summarizing this to them a couple of weeks ago, and saying, telling them that their guidance counselors would be reaching out to them to manage their schedules, and they have. But I will say, in the letter, I have highlighted a lot of the success we've had with our COVID-19 safety protocols, and encouraged folks that if those are some of the concerns that are keeping them fully remote, that we feel like we've got a very good handle on safety within the school, despite the continued increase in positive cases, both in Vermont and nationwide. So that's my quick and dirty on where we stand for reopening and how we're moving forward. Any questions?
Chris?
Yes.
What is our, what is your prognosis for being able to go to a full five-day program? Are we...
A full five-day program with everybody in on every day?
Yeah.
So...
I'm hearing a lot of stuff, you know, from...
Well, I'm going to tell you, our greatest challenge with that is the mandated social distancing.
Yep.
And I, and the status of that hasn't changed since the last time I reported out on it, but just to summarize, we have some larger spaces that we can take advantage of that are not traditional classroom spaces. So I'm talking about cafeteria, auditorium, the gym, now that we are in the phase that we're in, we can do indoor Z within certain parameters, so that no longer really presents itself as a classroom option. The library is one. You all know that we've got a pretty good-sized library in there, but one of our greater challenges is that our class sizes in certain blocks of time, and the content areas that have the larger classes that might need to be moved from their regular classroom settings, that's what I'm getting at. We've got these larger places where we can take a bigger class that for social distancing purposes doesn't fit in its regular, you know, if everyone was there on a given day, wouldn't even come close to fitting everybody in. We could move them to these larger spaces, but in too many cases, and I use science as my example, to move those classes to non-traditional classroom spaces takes them away from a lot of the materials and, and things that they need in order to pull that class off. And I say science, because I think for many people it would be obvious that there is a lot of science equipment that lives in science classrooms and, and is not as transportable as would be necessary to pull this off. So that's the long version, Jack, of while we've got six-foot distance, despite the fact that we have movable walls, that six-foot distance spacing for too many of our class sizes is the current obstacle. We are, by the way, paying attention to that as we, I mean, the master schedule is built for the year. We get the opportunity to tweak it for the second semester, and as we do that tweaking, we are trying to do everything we can to keep class sizes small enough to potentially pull off more students in the building. But again, as I said, that clap, even the second semester master schedule was already created, so our hands are tied there a little bit from a class size perspective.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Oh, so now that's me again. So now, update on HVAC. I wish that I could give you some specific information, but the, the best update I can give you is that the work assessing our air handling system is very active currently. So for the past couple of weeks, there's really two phases, two major questions that are being explored. One is quality of the air. So we've had a person coming in, doing a number of tests and assessments of both the air and the system providing the air for the air quality perspective, and the other one is kind of an operational assessment. This is all being contracted through MNE Engineering. They subcontracted the air handling, excuse me, the air quality piece, and so Jim DeBau has been very busy with these folks. And I guess I would also tell you from the financial end, the whole project has, did get approval for grant funding, so. What we know now, when I get some sort of written report, I'll have more for you.
And do you have one? Sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Hudson, real quick, if I may, and thank you, Molly, excuse me. What was the total grant for that?
Shy of $20,000.
Shy of $20,000. Are we matching, or are we...
Nope, and Lynn may have more information on that, but it's been, it's been approved for grant funding.
Okay. It's just been a while since we've discussed this, so I don't want to, you know, remember.
I live with this. You come to it once a month, so.
Jack, do you have a question?
Yeah, Chris, what are you, what are you hearing for a timeline when we might hear? Because we are looking at budgets, and if we're going to be committing money, it'd be nice to know what kind of money we need.
Well, it's, I don't have an answer for you, except to say that the work needs to be done before the end of December, is my understanding. Lynn, is that correct? So I'm going to guess that...
This is the, this is the evaluation money, not the construction money.
Well, we really don't have construction money. What it is is...
No, that's why I'm saying next year, construction money, need to know bottom line, you know, what was the dough.
Here's what I want to tell you. I am not hearing things that leave me thinking, I better put some discretionary money into the budget. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
So, but again, I'm, that's all I can tell you right now, but, but that's the timeline. I suspect we'll get some information in January.
Thanks.
Anybody have any other questions? Priscilla?
Can I go back to the other one? I got one more question for Chris on kids being there.
Sure.
Okay, so Jack asked you about them there full-time, five days, but, and I know you're doing some classes that are like, just there a few, but those classes that are also doing virtual on the other day, so that students are getting a full five days of different programs. What about those ones like the, particularly the social studies I'm thinking about, because I know theirs was running the other way, they're only doing two days and two days. Are those ones that you can get in there, at least the four days, so that we've got at least kids having a five-day program with them actually getting class instruction for all five days?
Sure. So what, we, we have not prioritized by content or by class our efforts to get students in four days a week. So again, just to summarize what I have noted before, one of our initiatives is to fill as many seats as possible on every day. So again, realize our seats are six feet apart, so there's that, there's that limitation. Our priority for more than just two days of in-person has been students that have been struggling, and there's a variety of ways that we track that. Teachers are watching it, guidance is watching it. We have a meeting once a week on Thursdays where we sit down and we talk about the students that are struggling, identify those, and recommend those for four days a week. That, that's how we've approached it. We have not taken a content approach to it, nor have we taken an instructional methodology approach to it.
My concern is that I would like you to be looking at, personally, anyway, and I don't, you have to hear from the other board members as well, but I'd like you to be looking at how they are getting five days of instruction, not, not some days of instruction and then other days just working on projects on their own. I want, looking at five days of instruction, whether it's, whether it's a mix of the virtual and the other, so that it's new instruction each day, or whether it's having to be there all those days. I'm looking at the instruction part of it, not how many are there or how many are not.
So what I would note for both Priscilla, which I'm going to say things you already know as an educator, but for the other, for other board members, progressing appropriately through a curriculum is not necessarily all about daily instruction and direct instruction from the classroom instructor. You can make reasonable and appropriate and very successful progress through a curriculum if you have the right amount of instruction, and also are provided enough time to work on projects related to that instruction. Additionally, without direct instruction, teachers can still interact with their students who are working on these projects outside of the normal classroom time. So Priscilla, it would really be impossible for me in a board setting to really hash out on a class-by-class or a curriculum-by-curriculum basis which curricula are best for that and which ones underserve the students. But all I can tell you is, what we have right now are a set of teachers who are very much committed to getting their students appropriately through the curriculum by mastering the proficiencies. And I will, I'll agree with you. Some are well-suited for direct instruction on a daily basis, and some are perfectly suited for something other than that, and that's, that's the best I can tell you right now.
Any other questions for Chris?
Molly?
Yes.
We were talking about quantities of kids that are having difficulties in the, in our elementary district meeting the other day, and I know that there's been some national literature saying as many as a third of students seem to be having really significant problems with these mixed models, and I'm wondering how we're doing in your, you know, rough order of magnitude, Chris. Are we, are people drowning there?
Well, so I guess the best way to answer that, Jack, is, is with a data point that I have to tell you, I haven't checked within the last week, but coming back to, remember, our approach is, students who are struggling, we are going to engage them more significantly in in-person instruction. That's four days a week. The last time I checked, not counting the special education students who started that way, we have some fairly high-needs students who from the very beginning were four days a week. I think we have about 60 students who have been scheduled for four-day in-person instruction, and that may include the special, and I'd have to check on that, but that's giving you a sense, and we have 315, I checked today, students on the books. So that does not mean, by the way, that every one of those was failing their classes in order to, in order to get to that place of, of four days of in-person instruction. It's really a case-by-case basis, taking a look at what the student has for classes and what they're doing successfully, and, but I guess, Jack, that's the best I can tell you right now is, as a measuring stick.
20% is better than 30%, Chris. I'm, you know, I'll take what we got.
Okay.
If I can just give you one more item that was not on the agenda, I just want to call to your attention that we are hopeful to be collaborating with Fact TV on a project that will get us the best possible coverage for winter sports, once we finally get there. And it's a collaboration where Fact TV and us will work with a third party that provides both equipment and some other resources for the best possible coverage of our winter sports, and it's going to be, more details to follow on that, but I want folks to know that I might be coming and asking you to accept a, a nice donation from Fact TV in that direction, so more to follow on that. That's your tease for next time.
Chris, can you just update us on what sports looks like right now?
Oh, yeah. I had to bring that up, didn't I? So it is, I just want to say, to begin with, the start of winter sports is well beyond our control. Originally, we were hopeful to start practices as early as November 30th, but at the state level, the governor has placed winter sports in the same category as recreation, or school sports in the same category as, as recreational sports, which means they're on hold indefinitely. What, what we have been told is that... What, what we have been told is that we should anticipate a weekly update at the governor's press conferences. We expected Tuesdays, but he's doing these on Fridays. And it'll be on that weekly base, excuse me, that weekly basis where we're going to be told, given a week's heads up to start winter sports. So this past week on Friday, they said not this week. And so we're going to wait to hear this next Friday to see when they decide to get things started. We're in, we're in a holding pattern.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got everything that was on the principal's report and nobody's got their hands up. So let's move on to the big one. Let's move on to finance, the budget. Flora?
So Molly, before we get into this, Flora goes, how deep do you want Flora and I and Chris Hudson to go into the budget? I know we sent an updated one to you right before the meeting because we are, continue to work on the ESU budget. And as you know, the ESU budget does dictate a lot that goes into the local budget. So I wasn't sure as best to dive into the budget tonight.
And before you answer that, Molly, let me just point out something that Flora and Chris and I have not had a chance to review that budget. But in looking at what I saw, and this is why I'm suggesting we might not want to get too deep into it. The bottom line of the FY21 budget, so last year's budget does not look accurate to me. And so I haven't had a chance to speak with Flora and Chris on that. So the, as I go to the annual report, the budget that was approved last year was 7,656,466. And this total at the bottom for the FY21 budget here is 8,016,000. And so I'm not having had a chance to go through that. I'm, I just want to note that there is some discrepancy there that I think we need to work out. But that's, it's just one point that I would throw out for consideration.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, Chris beat the punch. The numbers look like these are tweaking before they present. I think that for, before we get into it into greater depth, probably the two bigger issues for us going to be whether or not we're anticipating issues with headcount and whether or not we, whether or not we need to build a budget based on the headcount we've had, more or less headcount we thought we were going to have before Corona happened, or whether we're going to be dealing with a significantly reduced one due to kids taking BTVLC or doing homeschooling or doing other things, because that's, that's an important consideration, broad brush as to what our budget might look like. But anyway.
So you're, you're, what you're telling me is we need to get some better numbers before we continue. That's your.
We need to get some better numbers and, but we could use this time to talk about Wes on the expenditure side and whether or not we are facing an income problem, because that's the one that will really determine this. I'm, I'm going to just go out and limb and assume that Chris and company are going to, would, would under normal circumstances, bring us something that would be within a, a few percent of what we did what this past year. The question is going to be whether or not that's going to work or not. And given headcount and compensation issues, and I think that's more important to have an understanding of.
Okay, I got Colin and then David.
Thanks, Molly. My question is, I would recommend, I agree with both Mr. Hudson and Jack about, you know, the numbers, you know, we need to obviously get more, a little more accurate numbers and have them tweaked a little more. Also, the, maybe, you know, my recommendation, just me personally, is just maybe Mr. Hudson could just maybe do a rundown of protocol, on budget, how it works. You know, I mean, every year we do do this, but every year is different. This year is very significantly different than years past. Also, like, you know, the deadline, the timeframe, what, you know, the budget committee really needs to be focusing on that way. We're not, you know, late or early or what have you. So just my thoughts. Thank you.
David, you're up.
Thank you, Molly. I was something going to say, you might want to check and see if the RVTC budget has inadvertently been merged into the high school budget.
Sure, we can take a look at that.
Chris Brown?
I was wondering if you want to have an opportunity for Flora to chime in on regards to, you know, people keep going around the inaccurate numbers. I'm not sure we're talking about inaccurate numbers. It may be some, but I think Flora can probably explain some of this.
Well, that's about where I was headed, Chris, is I guess long as we got Flora here and we've had something sent to us. It may be just a, you know, I don't want to turn this into a two hour line by line because I don't think we're there, but Flora, can you give us a rundown?
Yes, thank you. Can you see my spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so I color coded the sheets. So the first portion that is light blue, it will be all of the salaries. Then I will have a second portion that is a peach color. That is the benefits. That is the amount that we cannot change. Yes, Colleen has a copy. And then I have the dark orange, which is the miscellaneous. That is everything that is extra expenses, which is like repair and maintainers, supplies, fees for traveling, for meetings and conferences. All of those ones are in the dark orange. And then the green color is going to be on the ESU assessments. I know Chris mentioned the fact that he seems to think that the budget, maybe the bottom line is not. Was approved. That bottom line is something that we can't touch. That is just something that is, it was uploaded in E-Finance. When I run the report, that amount comes up. It's not an amount that it could be touched or changed because that is what it was set and approved in E-Finance. So if it is different than what was approved, I have no idea how it could have been changed. For example, when you guys finish with this budget, if it gets approved, I will upload the budget with Leslie from E-Finance and that budget gets saved and can be switched. So maybe then that's something that Chris could look as FY21, if it is something different to him than what he had. But that is what it said is don't in E-Finance. FY21 year to the actual, this column here is what they have encumbered till today. And then the last column, which is FY22 requested base is the new budget amount requested per each of the line and categories. And then our comparison data for the year FY21 to FY22. The budget composition percent is the percent of each of those lines in the budget. And for FY22, we have that, the salaries is a 35%, 14% for the benefits, 34% for assessments, and then an 18% is for miscellaneous. From last year to this year, the variance of the budget, which is the increase, is 11%. And then that 11% makes these lines, 3% in salaries, 8% is benefits. Those ones we can adjust. That is life insurance, health insurance, dental, vision, PICA, Beamers. So I cannot adjust those numbers. The health insurance that go up for dental vision and insurance itself. And then we have assessment, 32%. And then miscellaneous total, which is all of the extras like supplies, COVID supplies, maintainers for the facilities, that actually went down a 2%. And then for the assessments, I did provide a sheet that it tells you which is the percentage amount for the assessment for each of the lines. So for custodial is a 10%. So the increase for FY21 that was approved to FY22 per custodial, the variance for those two years is $3,000. That's a 10% increase. For the board, it went down. So last year, we had above amounts that was added to the board. This year, we don't have that amount. I have reviewed that with Chris and we thought that it wasn't needed. So that's why it's showing such a huge decrease in the line for the board. Transportation, it seems that is a 21% increase, but that is because we decided to merge special ed, transportation and regular transportation. Because at the end of the day, it's still the same, the department is still transportation. It's just, I guess, expense wise dividing it more. So just for you to see it in one line, I put just transportation, all of it together in one line. So that's why you see a 21%. Then we have special ed department, that is a 63% increase. Food service is a 1%. The business office, they go down 4%, but that is because we made adjustments in our department between overtime as well as this change in staff. And then the superintendent office as well, his office had different staffing that right now is not there anymore. So that's why you see as well, an adjustment in the superintendent's office. And then for early ed. This line was reviewed with Chris this morning and we decided that the early ed is going to be assessed just to the elementaries, not to the high school. And that's why right now we don't have any increase for the early ed.
For? Yeah, since the early ed went from 19,000 and changed to zero, should be showing, well, yeah, I was going to say it's 100, it's 100% decrease, but.
Zero, because we don't have anything in that line anymore.
Okay. We probably will want to talk to Andy Ahos because if the transportation line is taking the special ed, a transportation, and we still have a 63% bump in special ed, I'm confident the board will want to understand that a little bit better because that's the largest percentage increase we've had since I think I've been on boards. But, you know, I, I, I see the numbers, I'm just, it, it just, it didn't look right, but maybe it is right. So I'll defer to Chris. Pardon?
Yeah, so special ed, I just put expenses for all of this. We don't have any adjustments for any of the grants that special ed could get or those salaries that grants were covered. So I just.
This might be an artifact.
Roll idea in case, you know, for example, a grant doesn't get approved or a grant gets deducted and we don't have those monies anymore. So I decided to just present what is the special ed department without any grants. If I would just take grants into consideration, that number perspective, it would definitely go down.
So this is kind of an apples and oranges comparison because the FY21 is the net number and the 22 number is sort of the gross number, would that be a correct assessment, characterization?
Yes, but we had to take into consideration the fact that benefits are going up as well and it's changing salaries and benefits. We do take into consideration as well COVID expenses, it is in there.
So, so this is, goes back to, you know, what we, we see every year is that if you, if you think about, you know, special ed's at 53% reimbursement now, these numbers don't reflect the reimbursement we get, but we have to put them in there because, you know, that's, you know, how the, you know, the, the state wants us to report. You can see it's, you know, 63%, but that doesn't include the grants and the budgets that go into, you know, special ed. That's just top of the line.
I appreciate that, Chris, but you know, we're, we end up voting on a net dollar amount based on some swag estimate of what those variances are going to be or what those, you know, amounts are going to be. We, and that's, and so when we look at these budgets, we're, we're budgeting our piece of the pie, not necessarily the whole pie. We, I've always said this is what gets so confusing about these budgets, particularly to new board members, is that, you know, we don't, we have a net budget at the end of the day, but we tend to have some of these line items that are sometimes net, sometimes gross. And when you're trying to oversee the budgetary processing, it can be kind of a head scratcher, to say the least.
Any other questions?
I have one. Molly, it's Debbie.
Molly, you're.
Molly, you gotta unmute.
There we go. Go ahead, Deb.
Okay. I would have wished to have these sooner. We just got them today, yesterday. Not a lot of time to review them. And again, as I agree with Jack, there's some, there are some things that maybe we need some title numbers. I see some FY21 actuals that appear to be blank in some areas, which I thought there should be some numbers in there by now. I notice the food is up $62,000, everything else is up $871,000, almost 82, 872, based upon the concerns over budgeting and the 9% from the state on education and all of that, and people still being unemployed because of COVID. I believe we should come back with a level fund budget for FY22. That's my thoughts on it. And also because we didn't use the contingencies already allocated for FY21, and this is be all schools, not just the high school, we should continue, consider a decrease as that money has not been used this year and will be available next year. Those are, those are my initial thoughts. And again, I don't think we're ready to make any deep in the weeds decisions right now.
Thank you. I can't see my screens to try to, does anybody else have anything?
Molly, I have a question.
We did take away contingency for this coming year. So whatever the contingency is, is for the past year. So we didn't take into consideration contingency for this coming FY22.
Can I go ahead, Molly? I, I do think that we do need to know what our expenses are and you, you need to do something about the taking into account those grants and the other. Because we can't present that our expenses are going to be that, all of that stuff. And also if the state's reimbursing us, you know, if we're getting, for 53% reimbursement, this is supposed to be what our expenses are looking at. And like Deb said, you know, with people out of work and that kind of stuff, we, we really need to take and be considerate of those people. Because if you present a budget that doesn't include some of, you know, our actual, what we're looking at as far as what we expect our expenses to be, then you're over inflating it and we're more apt not have voters vote for it as well. I think we need tighter figures, like you said.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anyone else?
Flora, can I have my screen back?
Molly, quick.
Yes, Chris.
So, you know, this, this goes back to what we were talking about before with, with the grants. I mean, until we have the grants and the, and the funding all approved by the state, it happens every year. We have to include it in the budget. We can't say we're getting this so much money in grants, so therefore. We can't say we're getting this so much money in grants, so therefore we're not going to budget for it. I don't think the state allows us to do that. That's why, you know, even, I remember, I have the conversation every year, whether it's this quarter or pre. Is that, that's what makes it so confusing for taxpayers. If we were able to say we're getting this much in grants and it's definite, you know, whether it's the 53, 53% in reimbursement, or if it's the, the millions of dollars we get for Essar or, um, all the grants we've gotten for the food services. If we took that off, yeah, that could be in much, the, the, the budget would be a lot more accurate in regards to what taxpayers are actually spending. But Flora, you can chime in if, if, if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that the state allows us to take what our grants may be, even if we applied them out of our budget, we still have to budget for it just for the just in case piece. I mean, that's, you know, that's what it really comes down to. Flora, can you talk to that a little bit? Is that? Yeah, Jack, I see you shaking your head. Want Flora to chime in for a second?
So yes, grants is now something that the state is obligated to provide us and they take into consideration different facts. Uh, we can budget thinking that we're going to get the same amount as previous years because the take, the state could always cut down. Uh, right now, even when we got the letter stating that the taxes were going up, they're taking into consideration the fact that they gave, um, school money for, um, COVID supplies. So right now they mentioned already that we need to start taking into consideration if COVID keeps going on, COVID expenses. So that's a, a fact that I had to budget in because it was state, um, suggestion that we had to take that upon ourselves. We can't be, um, thinking that we might get extra funds from the state. We might not get anything else. Or we might have to even pay back some of the funds that they've been giving. Yeah.
Jack, did you want to speak?
Yeah, um, I disagree. And I've done, I've been doing budgets for kind of a while. And, um, each, you know, we, the budget that we ask taxpayers to vote on is the net net. And we, we do pick a figure as to what we anticipate the state may give us. Sometimes we are wrong. But we at least put a number in so that we, because otherwise what you're really doing is you're asking the taxpayers to pay several hundred thousand dollars in tax money that we expect to get reimbursed. Uh, and that basically means that we have several hundred thousand dollar surplus. That's not how budgets are done. At least even anywhere and, and it haven't been done here. Uh, it, we, I think it's important for us to have an idea. We should, if we're going to do, do a full expense budget, then we have to show what the full expense was, line item by line item, for example, in special ed. You can't have a net expenditure in one place and a gross expenditure in another and have any sort of rational budget process. It's got to be the same basis point for the figures. Otherwise, everybody's spinning their wheels and wasting their time or asking the taxpayers to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes that we frankly don't, we don't really think we're going to need. Um, never done it that way. And I'm willing to have a conversation ex parte with our colleagues in the finance office and with the superintendent, but I know how we've done it in the past and adding it. All I got.
Okay, I think we've hashed it out enough tonight unless somebody's really got, um, a question because I think that, um, so my only concern, just a minute, John. My only concern, Flora and Chris Pratt, is we're getting close to the end of the year here. It sounds like we need to make sure we have another meeting. Um, these budgets need to be approved by middle of January. Is that true, Flora?
Yes.
So, um, I think, um, what do you think we, so if we go two weeks, it's the 28th of December. It's vacation week. Um, most of the time, nobody wants to have a meeting on vacation week. So we go to the fourth of January. Is that going to give everybody, is that going to give you enough time?
Yes, it's not changing the budget completely. It's just adjusting some lines.
Do you think that we ought to have a meeting before then? For the budget? If we just have a high school meeting for the budget, do you think we need that?
I think anytime after the SU budget, you know, we're going to do some more work on it tomorrow based on tonight's conversation. But I don't think it would make sense for any of the local boards to have another meeting until after the SU budget.
Right. Is approved?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And is that this Wednesday?
Tuesday, tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, she was getting the first crack at, at the SU budget. And I, I would highly doubt that there's any kind of approval is going to come out of it Tuesday or Wednesday. So we're looking, um, right after, you know, sometime after Christmas. You know, we can, the vacation, it doesn't have, I mean, it's, most of us are working anyway. So it's not like, you know, we have, we have all that time. You know, we just a few days off and then we're right back at it.
But so the issue doesn't meet after this Wednesday until the 30th though, right? Or they don't even have usually have a meeting on the, there's the first and the third Wednesday?
Yeah, right now we have a meeting, the budget meeting scheduled for Tuesday. We had, David moved the meeting up from the end of the month, the 23rd to Wednesday. And so is there, as of right now, that's all that's scheduled. That doesn't mean it's like the same conversations we're having here tonight that, uh, we wouldn't be scheduling another SU meeting, all depending on how the conversation goes Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay, I just, I guess I just wanted to get it out there that, you know, it sounds to me like there ought to be another meeting where people can have asked questions once they get it in front of them for a couple of days. Um, David, you've tried to raise your hand three times. I'll let you talk.
Thank you, Molly. Um, uh, Chris is correct. The, uh, WNASU Budget Committee meets tomorrow. I believe it's five o'clock, Chris.
I believe, look while you're talking.
We meet tomorrow afternoon and we can revisit the agenda to be certain of the time. What I wanted to say is that, uh, normally the SU would meet, I believe, on the 30th. However, um, given the fact it's the holidays, that may not be the best date for it. However, once again, I'm going to ask people possibly to keep their calendars open, assuming that nobody's planning any ski vacations over the Christmas break. We may want that date, uh, and possibly even the 23rd, although I think that's the tougher of the two to, for the, uh, supervised reunion to see how close we can get to finalizing a budget. So when we hit the beginning of the new year, that the local boards will have some hard numbers that they can work with. So what I'm saying to SU members and all board members is, um, we, we may very well need to meet during the break in order to get SU budget, um, as close as we possibly can, so we can do some accurate budget, budgeting at the local candidates.
Well, we can't go anywhere, David, so we might just, we'll have some meetings. Jack, did you ever hand up?
Just to remind people that when we've gotten caught before, and it's been a while, uh, when we've had budgets late, um, we have asked people to meet every week until we've nailed them down. It's not much fun, but I think that we're here because we're a month behind. So, you know, fasteners, seat belts, it'll be a fun, uh, fun December and January and you just have to deal with it.
Thank you. Flora, I think we have exhausted whatever we've got for budget talk for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, committee reports, none that I'm aware of. Okay. Um, David Clark, WNESU Board Meeting Review.
Thank you, Molly. This is, this is my rough notes on the last WNESU meeting. Uh, we had quite a few members of the public who spoke. And heaven help me, I think the only substantive action that we took was to, um, help me out here, Chris, was to accept the recommendation of the, the nurses and, um, act accordingly. Uh, we listened to school updates. Um, we had, actually the school updates were quite interesting. And I do have, um, an update from, uh, VTVLC, which I think may be somewhat relevant to some of the discussion we've had tonight. This time last year, uh, VTVLC was showing 2,500 enrollments. That's a kid taking the class. Right now, uh, uh, according to Jeff Renard, I believe we're bumping up around 45,000 enrollments, which kind of explains why, uh, some classes are tight. Um, it's really quite a, quite a remarkable, um, transformation for VTVLC. And, um, we're going to be back in again this coming, uh, Wednesday night, um, with other items as well. I'm hopeful that we don't have a long, long meeting. But, um, as the saying goes, be there or be square, or at least be there or, um, have less information than you would have otherwise. So I would encourage board members to show up. And by the way, my notes say that that SU meeting was November 18th. So a lot, lot of water over the dam since then. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Unfinished business and we reworded that to update on donated funds for financial literacy and other goals. Chris Hodgson.
Here we go. Back in late October, early November of last year, I presented to the board a, um, a donation from the Haver Foundation for $250,000. The board sometime along that timeframe, sometime in November, I think, passed the following motion, um, to accept the very generous gift of $250,000 from the Haver Foundation with the intention of this gift to be the support of student learning and growth in the areas of one, financial literacy, two, online coursework of any kind, which helps a student progress toward a high school diploma, three, the study of economics, and four, the study of science. The first two areas listed are the priority areas for these funds. This money will be placed in a reserve fund from which funds will be drawn as needed for the purposes previously listed in this motion. So, um, I'm sure you all remember that, right? You had that memorized. So that was, um, a motion that was passed by the board. Very soon after we passed that motion, we started, uh, we formed a committee, um, to, um, particularly focus on financial literacy. Um, and really quite honestly sprint out of the gate with that. And the gate got closed hard on us on March 13th. Um, so along the way, we've, we've expended money from that account twice. And I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but, um, we have a math class called Math Applications. And that class is taught, it, it, it reinforces algebra and geometry skills, but it has a strong focus on financial literacy. So we purchased some hardware and some software to support that class. And because online coursework is a high priority for this, we never really expected that when we got this money, we were going to be doing so much online coursework. But we have tapped into that money to pay for all of our VTVLC classes for this year. So that's, you're quick and dirty. Um, I am really, I would love to have, um, school running in a way where we feel like we can organize new curricula and new programming as we would be doing with the financial literacy. But we hope that once things get back to business as usual, we'll be able to pick up that work again. So.
Thank you, Chris. Um, David, does that satisfy?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. Us supporting VTVLC, um, is an appropriate use of the funds.
Indeed.
Anyone have any questions for Chris on that? Jack, did your hand up?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, do we have to write a report to the funder and do we have any, I, do we have any sense as to whether or not they'd be prepared to write another grant? Cause sometimes you get ongoing, sometimes you get, uh, one-time onlys here. And we have any sense of any, either of that at this point?
Well, we're not, we're not required to report out to them. I have been in, um, um, contact, but I can't describe it as frequent or regular, but actually the, the individual who provided the money came and visited the school over the summer. Um, and we had a very good conversation about all of the things that, um, we are able to do and hope to do with that money. And I gave her a tour and it was, it was really a great visit. Um, there is another individual who is her banking person down in Nashville, who I've also been in touch with, um, and have conversations about what we've done. And again, same, basically a very similar summary that I've given here that we had a very enthusiastic committee of teachers who really embrace the, the priority that financial literacy should be. And, you know, we had a few meetings, but again, uh, we got derailed by COVID-19. And, um, so I've been in contact with them. They don't expect us to, to report out on this. Um, and we have not asked about, um, whether or not we're going to be, uh, regulars of theirs. So.
It wouldn't be a bad, uh, having, having family that does this for a living, it wouldn't be a bad idea to just check in on that because sometimes you get a nice surprise.
Sure, sure.
You know, um, Kathleen does one-offs all the time that turn into tenure commitments and we like those.
Well, and to be honest with you, I was hopeful that we're going to be, be able to report, um, uh, a financial literacy graduation requirement and all the supports that go along with that. By the way, we don't just do that without the supports that go along with that. So if you're thinking about that, sit down on the back burner now because that's where it is on the back burner. But I think that's how you get folks to be enthusiastic donors because they become enthusiastic about what you did with their money the first time around. That's my thinking and that's my strategy.
I agree with that. Okay.
So.
Okay, we have down to new business. And it is financial support for the Booster Club through a, through donated funds. We actually, on I believe November 5th, maybe November 2nd, whatever our first meeting in November was, we voted on this, but we did not have a quorum. So that vote was no good. And we are now looking for a motion. Um, Chris, help me out with this.
We had, uh, so we had a donated fund about a year ago that we have not yet spent toward athletics. Um, for, that the board accepted for $2,500. What we discussed at the meeting that didn't have the quorum was, um, the unfortunate situation that the Booster Club, which provides a lot of support for our, um, co-curricular activities, not just sports. Um, they also do scholarships. They even support drama. Um, their primary fundraisers or significant fundraisers are the concessions at football games, concessions at basketball games. And, um, we had essentially no concessions at football games. We had very few fans and we, the Booster Club tried to do a little bit with that, but that was not a moneymaker. And when we play our basketball games, there will be no fans. So that's why I felt like it was reasonable to take that $2,500 and pro, send it to the Booster Club so they can continue, uh, their great work.
So we need a motion to.
Molly?
Yes, Priscilla.
Um, do you want the one Colin made on the ninth of November? And then he can make the motion. I can read it to you and then he can make the motion. Would you like that?
Yeah.
Okay. It says Colin made the motion to give the funds from Wyndham Charities $2,500 donation to the Booster Club to support our kids and their loss of fundraising.
Colin, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So you make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Thank you, um, Priscilla for pointing that out.
And can I have a second?
I can second, Margot.
Margot, second. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on this? Just, Jack?
Help me out. This is, this is Wyndham Fund, uh, Foundation money.
No, no, no.
No.
Win Ben Charities donated money to us. They do like annually. They have frequently. So, yeah.
Okay, I, I, I heard Windham and I thought, wait a minute, something's not off here. Okay, fine.
Anyone else? Okay, I gotta get to my page and my roll call on it. They have a motion made and seconded to accept moving the $2,500 donation from Win Ben to the Booster Club to help with the scholarships and all the other good stuff they do. Colin?
Uh, yes.
David?
You spoke before you were fully unmuted, David.
Yes.
Deb Wright?
Aye.
Margot?
Yes.
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Motion passes. We have so. I, when I look at the calendar and tell me right or wrong, but it looks to me like we ought to have a meeting in the week between Christmas and New Year's. So I think we ought to put on a calendar that we're going to have a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Fine with me if you need a consensus or, but you as the chair are in charge of that, so.
And that will at least give us some time to talk about the budget, get that done, because I've been doing this for a long time too, and we're getting to the, you know, people are going to have questions and we gotta be able to have time to get those answers for everyone.
I agree. Um, one thing, Molly, if I may, real quick, um, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just real quick, um, Budget Committee members for the high school, if we could just, I believe I'm on that, but I'm not sure who are the, the other members are. If that's something you can work on just prior to the next meeting, you know, and send it.
Well, I think we're, so we have gotten so far into this, Colin, that I believe
Everybody.
is going to be a.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That, that's totally cool. All right, thank you.
Um, I'm going to move to director's comments before we go into executive session for superintendent's evaluation. Uh, David Clark?
Thank you, Molly. You saw me on the phone at the beginning of the meeting. I was not being rude. I was trying to recruit a few more members to the table.
Margot?
Well said, thank you.
Priscilla?
My comment is, I know they're rolling out that vaccine and they delivered, made their first deliveries today, so hopefully that will start kicking in. It's going to take a while, as they keep telling us, but if it starts kicking in, maybe we can get, you know, have more in-person for our students and just see them soaring. I know our teachers and our staff and our administration and everybody's doing everything they can at this point, so just glad that we're part of that group.
Jack?
Said enough already tonight, thanks.
Colin?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Deb, right?
Um, except for everyone stay safe and continue to keep your circle small and, you know, and say hello via methods like this to all of your relatives for the holidays. Um, my granddaughter got COVID and long as her two-year-old and her significant other, they were working for Faith Ford. Um, they are now totally recovered and everyone's back to work and, and daycare and that sort of thing. But you never know where it's going to happen, so please be careful.
Thank you. We, I would like a motion to move into executive session to discuss superintendent's evaluation and to invite administration?
To move.
And ask anyone on the board.
Molly, and Chris, I want to speak to your question here. I'm just trying to get the ducks in the row. We're not actually, I believe, going to be doing evaluating tonight, simply discussing the formatting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Check the chat to see who's still, if, um, people who are in the public could please start logging off so the board could go into executive session and have a good evening.